Session resumed. Session suspended.
Session resumed.
Majority Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Speaker of the House will address the body.
Mga inamahal kong kasamahan sa malaking kapulungan, halkong kababayan, nag-araw po sa inyong lahat. I stand before you today without most humility and with deep gratitude for the trust and confidence you have accorded me. That trust has been the source of my strength in every day of service. When I assumed this responsibility, I made a solemn commitment that the House of Representatives would be the people's house. Isang kongresong bukas, tapat at tunay na naglilingkod. Yet leadership also demands that we confront the trials of the present. In his recent State of the Nation address, our president reminded us that accountability must prevail and that no one is above scrutiny. I fully and unequivocally embrace that call. The issues surrounding certain infrastructure projects have raised questions that weigh not only upon me but upon this institution we all serve. Ating mga kababayan ay naghahangad ng linaw at higit sa lahat ng tiwala. Tungkulin natin ito'y maibalik. The longer I stay, the heavier that burden grows on me, on this House, and on the President I've always sought to support. And so, after deep reflection and prayer, I have made a decision today with a full heart and a clear conscience. I tender my resignation as Speaker of the House of Representatives. I do this so that the Independent Commission on Infrastructure may pursue its mandate freely and fully, without doubt, without interference, without undue influence. Walang pipigin, walang makiki alam. Let the truth emerge and let justice be done. My colleagues, carry forward the work of this institution with unity and resolve. For the Filipino people never lose faith in democracy for it remains capable of self-correction and renewal. Mga inamahal kong kababayan, I leave this chamber as I first entered it. A humble servant, ready to serve wherever duty may call. I stepped down not in surrender but in service for sometimes the greatest act of leadership is the grace to let it go so that this institution may endure stronger than ever before. Madamong salamat, ayon atanan, mabuhay ang kongreso ng taong bayan, mabuhay ang Pilipinas.
Session suspended.
Session resumed, Majority Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The nominations are now in order. Majority Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo from the 2nd District of Quezon City to make his nomination.
The Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo from the 2nd District of Quezon City is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to nominate Honorable Faustino Boge D III for the position of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to recognize the Honorable Antonio Tony Petti Albano from the 1st District of Isabela to second the nomination.
Madam Speaker, this humble representation seconds the nomination for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, Congressman Faustino Boge Gomez D III.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, there being no other nomination for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, I move to close the table for nominations.
There is a motion to close the table for nomination for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is granted. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. There being no objection, the motion is approved. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Secretary General will now call the roll of members. May we request members upon being called to state the name of the candidate they are voting for as Speaker of the House of Representatives without explanation.
Roll of Members, 20th Congress, First Regular Session, 25 to 28, as of August 11, 2025. Avalos. Abante. Asidre. Akop. This representation vote for D as Faustino D as Speaker of the House. Acosta.
For the 3rd District of Palawan, Mr. Speaker, we vote for Congressman Faustino D.
Adyong.
D for Speaker.
Bingkula.
I vote for Faustino Boge D III as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Agarao.
Speaker, Faustino Boge D.
Agya.
From the Lone District of Kalinga, I vote for Faustino Boge D for the 20th Congress of speakership.
Alano.
From the Lone District of Basilan, I vote for Congressman Faustino Boge D.
Alba.
From the 1st District of Bukidnon, I vote for Representative Faustino Boge D for Speaker of the House.
Albano.
From the 1st District of Province of Isabela, I vote for Faustino Boge D III.
Almario Chino Miguel.
From the 2nd District of the Province of Davariyantal, this representation votes for Honorable Faustino Boge D III, Mr. Speaker.
Almario Dennis.
From Macazis City, 2nd Congressional District, my vote is for Congressman Faustino D III. Thank you very much.
Almonte.
For the 1st District of Misamis Occidental, I'll vote for Faustino D III.
Albareso Se.
I vote goes to Faustino Boge D.
Albaris Mercedes.
Madam Speaker, I vote for Faustino D III.
Amante.
From the 3rd District of Laguna, my vote is for Faustino Boge D for Speaker of the House.
Amatong. D. Ang. Angara.
This representation from the Lone District of Aurora votes for Faustino Boge D III for Speaker.
Angelis.
From the 2nd District of Terlap, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III.
Aquino.
For the Lone District of Butuan City, I vote for Faustino Boge D.
Aquino Magsaysay.
For United Senior Citizens and Party List, I vote for Congressman Faustino D.
Harbison Munir.
From the 2nd District of Sulu, I vote for Faustino D.
Harbison Munir Jr.
Faustino Boge D III.
Arenas. Arrogancia.
From the 3rd District of Quezon Province, I vote for Faustino D for Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Asistyo.
From 3rd District of Caloocan City, my vote is for Representative Faustino Boge D.
Atide.
Madam Chair from Quezon City District 1, my vote goes for Honorable Faustino Boge D for Speaker of the House.
Commentado. Ayon. Ayon.
Madam Chairman, from Swerte Party List, being a member of the minority, I choose to abstain. Thank you.
Bagao.
From Binagat Islands, Madam Speaker, I am a member of the minority. I vote to abstain.
Balindong.
Faustino D.
Banyas Nograles.
From Lone District of General Santo City, I am voting for Congressman Faustino Boge D.
Bancoro.
From the 1st District of Zamboanga Cibugay, I vote for Honorable Faustino Boge D as Speaker.
Barba.
Si Buto City may kadwa distrito, di provincia di lokos Norte, ket para kay ni diputado Faustino Boge D III.
Barbers.
In behalf of the people of Surigao del Norte, District 2, my vote is for Speaker Faustino D.
Baronda.
From the Lone District of Iluilo City, my vote is for Faustino Boge D III.
Persaga.
I abstain.
Basco. Basco.
This representation from the 1st District of Agusan del Sur, I cast my vote to Representative Faustino Boge D III.
Bautista Clode. Bautista Joan Monique.
On behalf of Trabaho Party List, I vote for the Honorable Faustino D III as Speaker of the House.
Bautista Lim. Beltran. Benitez Elpredo.
From the Lone District of Macalon City, I gladly vote for Faustino D.
Benitez Javier Miguel.
Madam Speaker, from the 3rd District of Negros Occidental, this representation votes for Congressman Faustino Boge D III.
Bernus Ching.
From the Solid North Party List, my vote is for Congressman Boge D.
Bernus JB.
From the Lone District of Abra, I vote for Boge D.
Birun.
From the 4th District of the Province of Iluilo, I vote for Faustino Boge D III.
Bukobo.
From the 2nd District of Taguig, I vote for Faustino Boge D III.
Bolilia.
From the 4th District, Province of Patangas, my vote is for Faustino D as House Speaker.
Bundok.
From the 4th District of Pamanga, I am voting for Faustino Boge D as Speaker.
Breones.
From Agapartilish, I vote for Faustino Boge D III as Speaker of the House.
Bulut Begdan.
For the Lone District of Apayo, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III.
Cagas.
From the Lone District of Dabodil Sur, I vote for Faustino Boge D III.
Calderon.
I vote Faustino D for Speaker.
Galixto.
From Lone District of Pasay, I vote for Faustino D III as Speaker.
Kawagnan Dan. Congressman D. Harry.
From the 5th District of Leyte, my vote is for Faustino Boge D III.
Castro.
From the 2nd District of Capys, this representation votes for the Honorable Representative Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Kaiton.
From the Lone District of Nueva Biscaya, I vote for Congressman Faustino Boge D III as a Speaker of the House.
Celeste.
Boge D.
Sendanya.
Ang akbayan po bilang bahagi ng minority ay nag-aabstain.
Tenisa.
Honorable D III.
Yan.
From the Lone District of Lapo-Lapo City, my vote is for Faustino Boge D III as House Speaker.
Tua.
From the 3rd District of the City of Manila, my vote is for Congressman Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Tua Tay.
From Zamboanga City 1st District, I vote for Congressman Faustino Boge D III as Speaker of the House.
Tungalao.
From the Province of Viva, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III. Thank you.
Ko Elisaldi. Correne Luis.
Abstain.
Ko Pilar.
From the 6th District of Quezon City, my vote is for Kong Faustino D as Speaker of the House.
Kohuangko Jaime Eduardo Marc.
Boge D for Speaker.
Kohuangko Marc. Goliantes.
The 3rd District of Batangas votes Speaker Boge D for as House Speaker, sorry.
Corbera.
From the Lone District of Agusan del Norte, I vote for Faustino Boge D III as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Cruz Agatabula.
I vote for Representative Faustino Boge D for Speaker.
Cruz Ricardo.
Ang kinatawan po ng lungsod ng Taguig, unang distrito at bayan ng patero ay para kay Faustino D III.
Cruzado.
The 1st District of Tabato, I vote for Congressman Faustino D Boge D III for speakership.
Uwa. Tagoak.
Madam Speaker, I believe that what was declared becan is only the Speaker of the House. Being a member of the minority, I refrain from voting because the minority has not been declared becan. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Alug.
Representative Faustino Boge D III.
Dayang Hirang.
I vote for Faustino Boge D.
Dasa.
From the 1st District of Northern Samar, this representation chooses abstain.
Jesus.
As a member of the minority, I abstain.
Delima.
Mga mayang liberalo, ML Party List, I abstain.
Devenesia. Depensor. D. Degamo.
From the 3rd District of Negros Oriental, this representation votes for the next speaker, Boge D.
Delmar.
Speaker Faustino D III.
Dimakuha.
From the Batangas 5th District, I'm voting for Representative D III as the next House Speaker.
Magila.
From the Lone District of the City of Pinian, I am voting for Congressman Faustino D.
Divma Porro Imelda.
1st District of Lano del Norte, votes for Faustino D III as Speaker.
Divma Porro CD Amina.
From the 2nd District of Lano del Norte, I vote for Faustino D.
Yokno.
For Amayang Partilist, I am a member of the minority. I abstain.
Unicio.
Mula po sa unang distrito ng lungsod ng Maynila, we vote for Speaker Faustino Boji D III.
Domingo.
Honorable Faustino D III as Speaker.
Morgan.
Congressman Faustino D III.
Duterte Harold James. Duterte Omar Vincent. Duterte Paulo. D. Faustino. D. Faustino Michael Carlos. D. Ian Paul.
The 3rd District of Isabela, we vote for Faustino Boji D III. Thank you.
Emano.
Mayong hapon ang katawan sa 2nd Distrito umubutar kang Congressman Faustino D.
Enberga.
Madam Speaker, the 1st District of Quezon Province votes for Faustino Boji D III.
Herice.
The 2nd District of Caloocan is very, very happy with the minority, so I abstain.
Escudero.
From the 1st District of Sorsugon, I am voting for Faustino Boji D III.
Espariz. Espina.
From the Lone District of Biliran, I vote for Faustino Boji D.
Pereer Antonio.
I vote for Faustino D III.
Pereer Jeffrey.
Congressman Boji D for Speaker. May God bless us all.
Flores. Cortez.
Madam Speaker, the 2nd District of Sorsugon votes for Congressman Boji D of Isabela.
Frasco.
From the 5th District of Cebu, Faustino D.
Presnedi. Presnedi. Puente Belia.
Faustino Boji D III.
Galang.
From the 2nd District of Valenzuela, my vote is for Faustino Boji D III as Speaker of the House.
Galios.
I vote for Faustino Boji D III as Speaker.
Garbin.
Madam Speaker, this representation votes for Boji D, Speaker 20th Congress.
García Albert.
Mr. Speaker, the 2nd District of Bataan votes for Faustino Boji D for Speaker.
García Dante. García Jose Arturo.
3rd District of Izal, I vote for Faustino Boji D III.
García Karin Hope.
Faustino D III.
García María Angela.
Madam Speaker, this representation from the 3rd District of Bataan votes for Representative Boji D III as Speaker.
Gardiola. Karin.
Boji D.
Gachalian.
Madam Chair, from 1st District of Valenzuela, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III for Speaker.
Gato.
From the Lone District of Batanes, I vote for Congressman Faustino Boji D III.
Gilpa.
Wan Coop votes for Honorable Faustino Boji D III for Speaker.
Ko. Go.
From the 2nd District of Isabela, may butis for Faustino Boji D III.
Gómez. González Alexandria.
From the Lone District of Mandaluyong, this representation votes for Faustino Boji D III.
González Aliza Miquela.
From the 3rd District of Pamanga, we vote for Congressman Faustino Boji D III as Speaker of the House.
González Christopher Shin.
Madam Speaker, this representation belongs to the minority block. I respectfully abstain.
González Roy.
From the Lone District of Cidip Santa Rosa, I vote for Faustino Boji D III.
Goriseta.
From the 2nd District, Province of Viloilo, my vote is for Congressman Faustino D as a Speaker of the House.
Kiko.
From the 5th District of Pangasinan, I vote for Boji D III.
Ginto.
From the 1st District of Capes, my vote goes to Faustino Boji D III as Speaker.
Gulyas.
Vote for Faustino D III.
Gutierrez. Hernández Charisan. Hernández Dennis. Hernández Perdinan.
From 43rd District of Porizal, I vote for Faustino D.
Hernández Perdinan.
From the 2nd District of South Cotabato, I cast my vote for Congressman Faustino Boji D III as Speaker of the House.
Hernández Ramil.
From the 2nd District of Laguna, I vote for Faustino D.
Ofer Hasim.
From the 2nd District of Zamboanga Cibugay, I vote for Honorable Faustino D.
Orribata. Ismula.
From Akbayan Partilist and a member of the minority, I vote to abstain. Thank you.
Euy.
From the 1st District of Negros Oriental, my vote for Speaker goes to Faustino D III. Thank you.
Javier.
From the 2nd District of Leyte, I vote for Congressman Faustino D for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Ko Antonio. Ko Elisa.
This presentation votes for Congressman Boji D.
Ko Wilton. Tonghul.
Speaker Boji D.
Ko.
Madam Chair, from Abang Lingkot Partilist, for Speaker of the House or Representatives, Congressman Boji D III.
Labad Labad.
On behalf of the 2nd District of Zamboanga del Norte, I vote for Honorable Faustino Boji D as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Laxson. Lagbas.
From Primo mis amis Oriental, I vote for Faustino D III.
Lagdameyo Jose Manuel.
Madam Speaker, from Davao del Norte, District 2, my vote goes to Faustino Boji D III for Speaker of the House.
Lagdameyo Monique Jasmin Maria.
From the 1st District of Makati City, we vote for Speaker Boji D III.
Lagman.
From the 1st District of Albay, I choose to remain with the minority. I abstain.
Lagon Dapne.
My vote is for Congressman Faustino D.
Lagon Soni.
Mayong hapon, on behalf of Akubisaya Partilist, our vote is for the Honorable Faustino Boji D.
Lara. Agayan 3rd District, I vote for Speaker Boji D. Nasa Tin.
Maya pagapanapon, in Primo Distrito ng Nangkapampangan, will be voting for Faustino Boji D III para Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Dedesma. Legasyon.
Faustino Boji D III for Speaker.
Legarda.
Madam Speaker, from the Lone District of Pantikad, this representation votes for Faustino Boji D III as the Speaker.
Legaspi.
In Amayang Partilist, we vote for the Honorable Fosia Boji D as Speaker for Gabya.
Ebiste.
For the 1st District of Batangas, I vote for Faustino Boji D III for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Rivanan.
Madam Speaker, being with the minority, I abstain.
Lopez.
In behalf of Alono Partilist, I vote for Representative Faustino Boji D III.
Gloria. Faustino D III. Loyola.
Madam Speaker, from the 5th District of Cabite, I vote for Congressman Faustino Boji D III as Speaker of the House.
Luistro.
For Batangas 2nd District, my vote is for Faustino Boji D III.
Lumayag.
From the 1st District of South Cotabato, I vote for Faustino Boji D III as Speaker of the House.
Makapagal Arroyo. Makatsait.
Atotche SIS Sis Pensionado Partilist, i porke desambuangayo tabo tayo kun Faustino D Jr. I mean Faustino D III, sir. Thank you.
Maceda.
From the 4th District of Manila, I vote for Faustino Boji D III.
Madrona.
Boji D.
Malapitan.
Caloocan 1st District is para Faustino Boji D.
Mangunda Dato.
Salamwalikum. Warahmatullahi Ta'ala. Barakato. From the Lone District of Magintanao del Sur, my vote goes for Faustino Boji D III.
Manikis.
From the 2nd District of Zambales, Congressman Boji D. Thank you.
Maranyon. Faustino D. Marcoleta.
Madam Speaker, my vote could have gone to either Kong Tobichanko, Kong Ducfrasco, or Kong Miaw Kiko Barsaga. But since they are not on the list, because I think they are not ready to run yet, maybe at least not for now. I think the House needs a major institutional change, institutional reforms, not just cosmetic changes.
We are not honoring anyone right now. We proceed with the election.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Section, please proceed.
Madams.
Marcos.
Madam Speaker, the 1st District of Ilocos Norte chooses to vote for Faustino Boji D III as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Marquez.
Madam Speaker, from the 1st District of the Province of Aklan, I vote Honorable Faustino Boji D III for Speaker of the House.
Mastura.
This representation votes for Faustino Boji D.
Matibag. Matugas.
From the 1st District of Chergao, Sorigao del Norte, I vote for Congressman Faustino D III as Speaker of the House.
Mendoza. Mercado.
From the 1st District of Southern Leyte, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodji D III.
Mercado Ribeilia.
Sambol Representation from the 2nd District of Cavite votes for Congressman Faustino Bodji D III.
Mira Flores.
From the 2nd District of Aklan, I vote for the Honorable Faustino Bodji D III.
Mommo.
Sorigao del Sur First votes for Bodji D as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 28th Congress.
Montez.
The 4K Partilis being part of the minority abstains.
Naba. Nasal.
On behalf of Bagong Emelasyon Partilis and as a member of the minority, I choose to abstain.
Nisai.
As part of the minority, I abstain.
Nolasco. Huaminal Henry.
On behalf of Asensio Pinoy Partilis, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodji D III.
Huaminal Sancho Fernando. Huaminal Sancho Fernando. Odukado.
Madam Speaker, this representation votes for Representative Bodji D III.
Olivares.
Madam Speaker, this representation from the city of Paranyake, Paranyake votes for Honorable Congressman Faustino Bodji D III as Speaker of the House.
Tongchuan.
Madam Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the 2nd District of Northern Samar, I cast my vote for my fellow party mate, Representative Faustino Bodji D III for as House Speaker. Thank you.
Ordanyes.
From Senior City Seis Partilis, I vote for Congressman Faustino Bodji D III.
Orretta.
From the Low District of Malabon, this representation votes for Faustino Bodji D III for Speaker of the House.
Ortega.
Tinagan di 1st Districtila Union, dibotos meikat D.
Huanyo Dison.
From the Low District of Mandawi City, my vote is for Congressman Faustino Bodji D III as House Speaker.
Pajernos.
This representation votes for Faustino Bodji D III for Speaker of the House.
Panaligan.
Faustino D III.
Pancho.
Honorable Faustino Bodji D III.
Panotes.
This representation votes for Congressman Bodji D.
Pascual.
From the 1st District of Nevai Cihah, my vote is for Faustino D III.
Perez.
Madam Chair, in behalf of the 2nd District of Zamboanga City, I vote Congressman Faustino Bodji D III for the Speaker of the House.
Pimentel.
Madam Speaker, on behalf of the 2nd District of Sorigao del Sur, I vote for Congressman Bodji D as Speaker.
Plaza.
Mister Chair, Madam Chair, from the 2nd District of the Province of Agusan del Sur, I vote for Faustino Bodji D for the Speakership.
Plato.
Madam Chair, 6th District ng Bulakan, Bodji D.
Po.
Pilang representative ng FPJ Panday Baynean Partilis, my vote is for Faustino Bodji D III.
Premisia Sagabas.
On behalf of the people of the 6th District of Pangasinan, I vote for Honorable Faustino Bodji D III as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Umarin.
Faustino D.
Uno. Bodji D. Kimbo. Rama.
Faustino Bodji D.
Rehenja. Recto.
This representation from the 6th District of Batangas votes for Faustino Bodji D III for Speaker.
Rehenja. Remulia.
From the 7th District of Cavite, our vote is for Speaker Faustino D III.
Rebilia Bryan.
On behalf of Agimat Partilis, my vote goes to Faustino Bodji D.
Rebilia Ramon Holo.
From the 1st District of the Province of Cavite, my vote is for Faustino Bodji D III.
Ridon.
Eh, we vote abstain.
Rivera.
Bodji D for Speaker.
Robes.
I vote Faustino Bodji D as Speaker.
Rodriguez Eloyo.
From the Low District of Catanduanes, I vote Faustino Bodji D III for the Speaker of the House.
Rodriguez Maximo.
Abante Mindanao Partilis votes for the Honorable Congressman Faustino Bodji D III, Speaker of the House.
Rodriguez Rupus.
Madam Speaker, on behalf of the wonderful people of the 2nd District of Cagueyan de Oro, the city of Golden Friendship, the gateway to Mindanao, I vote for the next Speaker of the House of the People, our incumbent Deputy Speaker, Representative of the 6th District of the Empire Province of Isabela, the Honorable Faustino Bodji de Guzman D III. Thank you. Let us speak.
Roman.
On behalf of the 1st District of Batan, I vote for Faustino Bodji D III.
Ramuales.
Cane Oro City, I vote Faustino Bodji D III.
Swansing Bellem Vanessa.
Faustino D III.
Swansing Michaela Angela.
This representation from the 1st District of Nevai Cihah votes for the Honorable Faustino Bodji D III as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Sunthay.
The 4th District of Quezon City shall remain with the minority.
Taliado.
Faustino Bodji D for Speaker.
Duaries.
Na tawo ko yun, Taliado.
Faustino D.
Na tawo ko na ba yun, Taliado.
Tan Ayman. Tan Joseph.
From 4th District of Isabela, I vote for Faustino Bodji D as Speaker of the House.
Tan Kit Micah.
Faustino Bodji D III.
Tan Reynolds Michael.
Abstain.
Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James.
From the 1st District of Summer, I abstain.
Tan Chai.
In behalf of Kamalayan Partilis, I vote for Honorable Bodji D as Speaker of the House.
Tan Huatko.
This representation, the 2nd District of Rizal, I vote for Faustino Bodji D III.
Tariela.
From the Low District of Occidental Mindoro, I voted for Speaker Faustino Bodji D as our Speaker.
Teodoro.
From the 1st District of Marquina City, this representation votes for Representative Bodji D.
Tering. Bebes.
Madam Speaker, in behalf of the GP Partilis, I vote for Faustino D III.
Tiango.
Madam Speaker, in behalf of the people of the Low District of Nevada City, I vote for Faustino Bodji D III.
King.
5th District of Manila votes for Faustino Bodji D.
Tino.
Abstain.
Tolentino. Juan.
Yuki Malbegren, eh, my vote is for Bodji D III. Thank you.
Tulpo Jocelyn.
From Axiias Partilis, I vote for Honorable Faustino Bodji D III.
Tulpo Ralph Mendel.
Madam Speaker, the people of the 2nd District of Quezon City vote for our next Speaker, Congressman Bodji D.
Tupas. Kutor. Wala, no. T.
Madam Speaker, as a member of the minority, I abstain.
Umalie.
I vote for Bodji D.
Ungab. Wala, no. Uy De Carlo. Uy De Carlo.
The honorable Faustino Boji D III as Speaker.
Uy Roberto.
I vote for Kong Faustino D for Speaker.
Valeriano.
Faustino Boji D.
Vargas.
The 5th District of Queson City is for Faustino D III.
Vargas Alfonso.
I vote for Faustino D III.
Beloso.
Mayong Hapon, in behalf of Malasakit at Bayanihan party list, I vote for Representative Faustino D III as the next Speaker of the House.
Beloso Tuason.
Obina.
Bergara.
This representation from the 3rd District of Nueva Ecija votes for Faustino Boji D III.
Bilia.
Wala? Wala ano?
Bilia Puerte Miguel Luis.
Magandang araw po, my vote is for Speaker Boji D.
Bilia Puerte Vicenso Renato Luigi.
Boji D.
Bilia Nueva.
Wala? Wala?
Bilia Rica.
I vote for Representative Boji D.
Biolago.
For Faustino Boji D.
Yamsuan.
The 2nd District of Paranyake through the Sambal representation votes for Faustino Boji D III for Speaker of the House.
Yap Kristo Person.
Honorable Faustino Boji D III.
Yap Edbi.
This representation votes for Speaker Faustino D III.
Yap Eric.
Boji D.
Yap John Gessel.
Madam Speaker, from the 1st District of La Province of Bohol, my vote goes to Representative Faustino Boji D for Speaker of the House.
Yatko.
In behalf of Nanae party list, I vote for Faustino Boji D.
Inares.
From the 1st District of Rizal, Boji D.
You Giselle Victoria.
I vote for Faustino Boji D III.
You Joseph Kim.
For the 1st District of Sambangadalsor, I vote for Faustino D III for Speaker.
Yulo.
This representation votes for Faustino D.
Samora Maria Carmen. Samora Isabel Maria. Subiri.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Bukidnon and as a member of the minority, I abstain. And as the last voting member here, I congratulate Speaker Faustino Boji D.
This is the 2nd District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 3rd District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 4th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 5th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 6th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 7th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 8th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 9th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 10th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 11th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 12th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 13th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 14th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 15th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 16th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 17th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 18th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 19th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 20th District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. This is the 21st District of Nueva Ecija, I vote for Faustino Boji D III. Second call of members for the election of the Speaker of the House, Abante, Cumentado, Bautista Clode, Bautista Lim, Beltran, Ko Elisaldi, Kohuangko, Aim Eduardo Marc, Duterte Vincent, Duterte Paulo, Espares, Presnedi, Garcia Dante, Gardiola, Gomez, Ko Antonio, Ko Wilton, Laxson, Ledesma, Makapagal Arroyo, Naba, Nolasco, Ominal Sancho Fernando, Rehenja, Romualdes Andrew.
Madam Speaker, from the Lone District of Iligan City, my vote is for Congressman D as Speaker of the House.
Okay. Romualdes Andrew, Romualdes Yedamari, Tan Amyan, Tan Samir, Tan Chai.
This is Tan Chai bumoto.
Tan Chai. Tan Chai bumoto, bumoto si Tan Chai. Thank you Congressman Tan Chai.
I, I vote for honorable Faustino Boji D as Speaker of the House. Sorry.
Yes ma'am. Tering, Tupas, Kutor, Umani, Ungab, Bilia, Bilia Nueva, Biolago.
With twenty-eight members abstaining from the vote, zero member registering a negative vote, and four members who did not vote, the results of the voting show that the Honorable Faustino Boji D. III garnered 253 votes. With 253 votes, the Chair declares the Honorable Faustino Boji G. D. III from the 6th District of Isabela as the duly-elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move to suspend for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. The Speaker-elect, the Honorable Faustino Boji G. III and his family are invited to the rostrum for the oath-taking. The Honorable Javier Miguel Lopez Benitez of the 3rd District of Negroes Occidental will administer the oath of office to the Speaker-elect. The Honorable Benitez is invited to the rostrum to administer the oath of office of the Speaker. May we request all the members of the House to rise.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
I, Faustino Boji D. III.
Of the...
Of the 6th District of Isabela.
Having been elected as...
Having been elected as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Hereby solemnly swear...
Hereby solemnly swear...
That I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
I will well and faithfully discharge to the best of my...
The duties of my present position and of all others. I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
The duties of my present position, all of others may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines.
I will defend, for, the Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Faustino Boji D. III, will now address the body.
To the honorable members of this August chamber, the twentieth Congress, mga kababayan, magandang hapon sa ating pong lahat. Ako po'y lubus na nagpapasalamat sa mga kasama kong mamabatas sa House of Representatives. Sa paghalal nila sa akin bilang Speaker, hindi ko po ito inaasahan. Matapos ang ilang dekadang paninilbihan bilang lingkodbayan, mula pa kabataang barangay, hanggang gubernador ng Isabela, nakala ko na ang susunod na yugto ng aking buhay ay para sa aking pamilya. Ngunit, ibang daan ang inilatag ng ating Panginoon, dinala niya po ako muli dito sa kongreso upang mashigit pangpalawakin ang aking paglilingkod. Aminado po ako, meron po akong pangamba sa aking dibdib habang iniisip ko, ang hamon na katungkulang inaatang sa aking balikat. Matid ko po na marami sa ating mga kababayan ang nasasaktan at nagagalit na dahil sa mga kasalukuyang kaganapan. Naiintindihan ko po kayo. Bilang anak ng lalawigan ng Isabela, alam na alam ko po ang mga pagsubok na dala ng matinding magyo, ang pagkasira ng mga bahay at buhay tuwing tumataas ang tubig baha. Sa ngalan nila, hinatanggap ko ng buong kababang loob ang hamon ng pagiging Speaker of the House. Akunaho ang unang magsasabi sa ating mga kababayan. Meron po kaming pagpukulang. Kami po ay nagpapakumbaba sa inyo. Nakikiusap po kami na sana bigyan niyo kami ng pagkakataong ituwid ang mga maling kalakaran at linisin ang aming hanay. Nakikiusap po kami na bagbigyan niyo pa kami ng tiyangsang makuha muli ang inyopong tiwala. Ako po ay kaisa ng ating mahal na Pangulo sa kanyang layunin na linisin ang pamahalan upang tayo ay bumangon muli. Under my leadership, this House will change. I will not defend the guilty and I will not shield the corrupt. Gaya ng paninindigan ng ating Pangulo, no rock, no ally, no office will be spared from accountability. We must threaten the Oversight Committee and fully cooperate with the Independent Commission of Infrastructure. Our duty is not to protect each other, our duty is to protect the Filipino people. Alam kong maaaring maging puno ito ng panganib dahil sa mga maaaring matapakan. Sinusugal ko ang aking pangalang na mga tagal ko pong pinagpaguran. Tayakapi ko ang sakripisong ito ng maibsan ang mas mabigat na sakripisong kinakaharap ng ating mga kababayan. Malinaw sa akin na higit matimbang ang aking pananagotang itaguyod ng ating saligang matas at unahin ang kapakanan ng mas nakakarami. Hindi kuwayaan ang sino man na membro dito sa twentieth Congress na gamitin ang kongreso para sa kanyang personal na interes. Panahon na, nangituon natin ang ating panningin sa mga pangailangan ng ating mga kababayan. Sila ang rason kung bakit tayo naririto. Huwag sana po natin kalimutan 'yan. Sila ang unahin natin bago ang pansariling kapakanan. Kung meron pong dapat na managot sa mga umuugong na mga paratang na ito, titiyakin natin na magiging patas ang mga pagdinig. At kung meron mang mga pangalang nabanggit sa mga pagdinig na ito, may mga tamang forum para sila ay makapagpaliwanag. Tayo po ay magiging transparent at accountable sa ating mga gawain. Kung kinakailangan, makpagugnayan sa mga naglalabas ng saloobin, ako po mismo ang harap para makipag-usap. Makikinig po kami sa daing ng ating mga mamamayan, makikinig po kami sa inyong mga boses. Ito lang ang paraan para lumabas ang pawang katotohanan at dito lang masisimulang matanggal ang agam-agam ng ating mga kababayan. Sa mga kasamahan ko sa kongreso, magtatanggom pa'y lamang po tayo kung tayo magkakaisa upang makamit ang hangaring ito. Buu po ang aking paniniwala na mas nakakarami sa ating mga kasamahan ang nangangharap at handang magtrabaho ng tapat para mapabuti ang ating bansa. Hindi ko po magagawa itong na nag-iisa. Kailangan po po kayo, kailangan po natin ang bawat isa. Kaya kukunin ko 'tong pagkakataon na 'to, naipabot sa aking ang ating pong pasasalamat sa dating Speaker, sa kanyang bukas palad na pakikipagtulungan para maisa katuparan ang isang maayos na transisyon at natatanging hangarin na ito. Sa tulong ninyo, sisiguruhin natin na ang bawat senti mo ng paglalaanan ng budget sa bawat departamento ay tutugma sa pangailangan ng mamamayang Pilipino. Pagtutulungan nating makapagpasa ng isang maayos at malinis na budget na mailalaan lamang tama sa mga programa para sa ating taong bayan. May mga bang ng ginawa upang gawing mas bukas ang proseso ng pagpasa ng budget at mas paigtingin pa natin ito. Ako po ay handang makinig sa iba't iba nating tinig upang higit ng makaunawa. Nakahanda po, nakahanda po ang aking bisig na makipagtulungan kanino man alang-alang sa ating bansa. Mula noon hanggang ngayon, ako po ay walang pinipiling kulay. Lahat ay mahalaga. Lahat ay may maaaring maiambag upang magampanan ang ating mandato bilang kinatawan ng ating pong mga mamamayan. Sa ating pong mga kababayan, hinihiling ko po na magpatuloy tayong magmatsag at magbanday. Tanging kayo lamang po ang makakapagsabi at makakapagpa-sya kung dapat bang ibigay ninyo muli ang tiwala sa amin. Kayo ang magiging bahagi ng reforma para masiguro natin sa darating na mga araw ang kapakanan ng taong bayan ang mauuna. Ngayon na po ang oras, hindi bukas, hindi sa susunod na mga araw. Sama-sama tayong babangon, sama-sama tayong kumilos, sama-sama tayong maglingkod. Hindi magiging madali ang ating tatalakayin. Alam kong magiging mahirap para sa ating lahat, pero gaano man kahirap kung ito naman ang nararapat, kung ito naman ang tama, ito ang kailangan nating gawin at pagtulungan. Sa bagong kongreso, ipaparamdam po natin ang tunay na malasakit. Ipapamalas natin ang tunay na paglilingkod na nakatutok ng buo para sa pagangat ng buhay ng sambayan ng Pilipino. Walang ibang agenda, walang ibang interes. Kapakanan ng Pilipino ang simula, gitna, at dulo, at wala nang iba. Sa lahat ng ito, hindi tayo hatulan sa ating mga salita kundi sa ating mga gawa. Hindi tayo husgahan sa ating mga pangako kundi sa ating pagtupad. Kaya hinahakayat ko ang bawat isa na sama-sama nating isulong ang isang bagong Pilipinas na matatag, marangal, at nagkakaisa. Muli, maraming-maraming salamat sa inyong pagtitiwala pagpala inawa tayo ng puong maykapal.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session suspended.
We request everybody to take their seats.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize Senior Deputy Minority Leader Edgar Erise of the Second District of Caloocan.
The Honorable Edgar Erise is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. On behalf of the minority block of this chamber, I would like to inform your honors that we have re-elected our minority leader in the person of Representative Marcelino Libanan. Thank you.
The manifestation of the Honorable Erise is noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to take up the additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications committee reports.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 287 titled: "Resolution Commending Honorable Perdinent Martin J. R. Waldes, Speaker of the House of Representatives, For His Distinguished and Transformative Leadership of the House of Representatives And For His Enduring Contributions to the Advancement of Legislative Excellence, National Unity and Public Service by Representatives Marcos Libanan, Suarez, Garin, Belindong, Ortega, Conghun, Singson Mihan, Puno, Di Paustino, Viron, Mendoza and Imano."
To the committee on Rules, Majority Leader.
I move to consider House Resolution Number 287 and request the Secretary General read the title of said resolution.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Commending Honorable Perdinent Marcos J. R. Waldes, Speaker of the House of Representatives, For His Distinguished and Transformative Leadership of the House of Representatives And For His Enduring Contribution to the Advancement of Legislative Excellence, National Unity and Public Service by-
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 287.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 287. Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 287 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other business left, I move that we adjourn session till the 22nd of September, Monday, 2:00 p.m.
Session is suspended till... A session is adjourned until September 22nd, Monday at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you for participating in today's conference. We hope you enjoy it and we'll see you again soon.